I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, whose stand is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I thank everybody for being here tonight, either in person or online. First item on our agenda would be the approval of the minutes.
I will move to approve.
Motion to approve the minutes from the September 5th meeting as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Approval of the agenda and the additions to the agenda.
If not, you're not going to use through that.
I think it's on there. Isn't that?
Yep. Here they are.
Yeah, there we go. Got discussion on later when we get to Highway 24.
I will move to approve the agenda.
We have motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second to go ahead and approve the agenda as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion approved, agenda is approved. First item on the agenda would be update from the Fair Board, Alwina Eppenstein. Welcome.
Thank you. Just wanted to bring everybody up to speed on the building projects that we have. We've been doing pretty good getting some larger grants approved and some money for that. We've got support from the Devils Lake Youth Activities Association for a hundred thousand and Devils Lake Tourism, they're twenty thousand. And we just got support from Egg Country at ten thousand and Otter Town Power, fifteen thousand. We have some pending grants for some larger amounts. We did apply for the Destination Development Grant and that will be one point five million dollars if we get that awarded towards building. And then we have Garrison Diversion. We are going to the meeting tomorrow and presenting our plan. And then we are waiting on Nodak Electric, CHS, Burlington Northern, Santa Fe, and Enbridge are all possible ones out there. Our 2022 donations and pledges are coming due for their 2023 payments, so there'll be more money coming in from that. And 2023 pledges is a hundred and twenty-four thousand, five sixty that we have so far. Our board members have divided up a list of businesses that we're personally visiting and we have two hundred and ninety businesses on that list. And we're hoping from those visits to those businesses that will generate around three hundred thousand dollars from those visits. And we also have just learned about a possibility that we might be able to get a Kansas City barbecue contest coming to Devils Lake and we would host that at the new building. Probably it would be in 2025, that would be the first one. And it would generate probably thirty-five to fifty teams the first year. And with each of those teams, there'd be six judges and then other people that would work the event. So it would bring in a lot of income to the area. So we're hoping that we can get that. And that would be the very first one in North Dakota. There's not another contest like that in North Dakota, so that would be kind of a big deal for us.
It would be really cool.
And then the Destination Development Grant. We're supposed to find out on that by November 1st and if we would get awarded that. We plan to get the building ordered this fall and get the groundwork started April of next year. And hopefully have completion by the fall.
What were you hoping that grant would be?
One point five million. You can apply. The amounts were anywhere from twenty-five thousand up to five million. There are a lot of bigger players in the game that are in the five million dollar range, but each application is looked at individually to see who merits the tourism money to go into it. So we're hopeful that we'll get something out of that. Anyone have any questions for me?
Sounds all very encouraging.
I think, I think it is.
Do you have like a total where you're at on money that you actually?
We're at about one point three hundred thousand right now. Or million, I mean, one million, three hundred thousand.
That you actually raise on it?
Yeah.
The only reason I ask that, Alwina, is public ask. Maybe it sparks some interest to get us to the amount that we want to get to.
I do actually have some brochures with me if anybody would like to help me.
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
What kind of price of project cost are you looking at?
The building, the bid that we have is two point nine million dollars. But there has been some discussion about cement for the whole building. So that would probably be another three hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand to cement the whole building. And it sounds like the community kind of would like that to be done, so the board's considering that.
It's good to listen to the community anyway, at least there's people that are watching what's going on.
And we just had someone from the community that gave us another idea for another grant to apply through. Their name is Bish, so.
Cool. A work in progress, but something could move on or not.
They're working on it.
All takes time. Thank you.
Anything else for Alwina? Alwina, anything else for us?
I don't think so.
Thank you, very much appreciated. Keep up the good work. Kevin, should we jump into you?
Sure, if we run into high pressure.
All right, next up on the agenda, Kevin Fieldson.
Okay, start off with our projects that we have going. They did finally get our paper patches done, so that project is done now. Any questions on that? I don't know if favors have a chance to look at them, but it went fast, so. Our gravel projects, they did finish Ramsey County Cadillac County line west of Hammond that's done. And I think they just got like a half a day left on Ramsey County 2 West over in the Penn, which is very Penn area. And then that'll be done also. So all in all, our summer projects with contractors will be done other than the bridge. Any questions on the gravel?
That was over on seven today and it looks really good.
A lot of the soft crabs are peeled up, yeah.
Looks like good gravel.
Yeah.
Huge improvement after here. Did you put about ten six two? Sure, no, I just made it up from the travel shoulders.
Yeah.
That'll be two.
Okay, our engineering firm for our CER projects come up. We did have the Andrew Committee for the engineering firm on a design project for CER. Met and they interviewed with KLJ Engineering on September 6th, 2023 at 9:00 AM. KLJ was the only engineering firm to submit a proposal. I'll read this whole thing because it has to be a part of the motion, a part of the motion to go through. KLJ scored three dozens, sixty, sixty-seven, and seventy out of the possible seventy points. First is the ranking system. And as the chairperson of the selection committee, I recommend that KLJ Engineering for the for the design engineering case for projects. CERP is at thirty-six fourteen oh zero zero two. CERP thirty-six oh six fifty-six. CERP thirty-six twenty-seven sixty-eight. And CERP thirty-six thirty-three for our parenthetical seventy. So I'd like to enter K motion. Let's all move.
We have motion and second to go ahead and approve KLJ as Kevin indicated for the engineering for those projects. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Probably should ask for some discussion, but probably isn't there now? Continue please.
All right, the next three items to deal with paying bills, are you willing to wait with them or go ahead and make those motions and pay them next meeting? I kind of got it handled myself there.
Kind of pay them?
They will get paid, actually paid until the first of the month. Even if we make motions tonight.
Sure. Or we just won't have to do a roll call? If we're not paying actually. You have three invoices there, it looks like, four invoices?
Yeah.
Three. Trailer from Butler, twenty-one thousand. Invoice from Down Construction for graveling, under forty thousand, five eighty, five thirty-eight. And invoice from Strata Corporation for paper patches, sixty-three thousand, two hundred, twenty-one dollars and one cent. Do you want to make a motion to pay those? Or do you want to?
Does it really matter if we make the motion now or pay the bills? Don't make the motion, that'd be pay those bills. As Jeff said, twenty-one thousand, thirty-eight seventy. For one forty-five, thirty-eight, sixty-three, two twenty-one. And I believe the last one was twenty-six, six nineteen.
Uh, that's an order of one, okay, that's.
So just the first three.
Yeah, correct.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to go ahead and pay those. Candy, would you like a roll call for those?
Um, yes, please.
Okay, we need discussion on those. If not, roll call, please.
Wilhelmie?
Aye.
Otis?
Aye.
Bolt?
Aye.
Gessner?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Okay, then we have a little bridge site that was replaced with culverts. I think back in the eighties, anyway. But it's just south of Kelvin Reagan and there's three seventy-two inch arches that are rusted out. I need to order new culverts and they will cost twenty-six thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety cents. And this is looking for motion, just go ahead and order those three. So, second.
Motion and a second to go ahead and order the culverts, three seventy-two inches. Further discussion? Probably take a while to get those, I imagine.
They aren't great yet.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, and then Region Eight, local road conference that's always been held in Rapid City. They moved the conference to Sioux Falls, South Dakota now because venue, Rapid City wasn't big enough for them there. I'd like to send myself adjacent to the convention, it's October 23rd to the 25th. Registration is a hundred and twenty-five dollars for each and rooms are a hundred and thirty-two, sixty-five a night, including taxes. For a total of five hundred and thirty dollars and sixty cents for two rooms. And we'll drive down, so the cost of the gas will be the only cost for transportation. So I guess I'm looking for a motion to approve the out-of-state travels for people. I'll make a motion to approve it. A second.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve out-of-state travel. Further discussion? Probably meals included after eating along the line, don't you?
Meals are included in registration, it might be one, but they're in travel portion.
So. Put them on just gas, registration. Okay? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Uh, North Mobile Telephone Company has submitted another permit to install fiber optic cable in the right way on Military Road to service that new cell tower on Military Road. They'll all stay in the south ditch. They won't have to cross the pavement or go underneath the pavement. It's about two hundred and seventy feet on the south side. It'll be cleared out in the back slope about sixty feet from the center line, so. I don't see, foresee any problems with the installation. So I'm looking for a motion to approve that, right, that utility permit on the right way. I was on the second.
Motion and a second to go ahead and approve the right away permit. Need further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Well, for anybody that's gone to the convention in Bismar in October, we meet with the DOT Secondary Roads, October 9th to 10:45, just to hand it up for anything.
Kevin, for those that haven't been there, you want to let everybody know what goes on there?
Okay, we have a, what's it called? Federalated Programming Sheet that we have to fill out of all the projects that we have coming up that we use our federalated money for. And then they, we meet with them down there at this convention to go over that sheet of projects. And I guess sometimes there's other things that come up like bridge funding and other things that. Every year we have to meet with the DOT down there for fifteen minutes, ten minutes, not very long. They have to meet with all the counties in that two-day period, so it doesn't take very long to go through it, but. And they haven't mailed out our program sheet yet either, I haven't seen it anyway. So we'll have to approve that before we go to the convention. Hopefully we'll have it by our next meeting.
Yes, it's nice that the convention's a week later this year.
Yeah, right, but I think there were some complaints about the convention being during that first Tuesday event and they finally got it changed.
Everybody had to rearrange their normal meeting dates.
And that would be somewhere in the civic center. The convention is here now in the civic center, maybe yourself or someplace inside the civic center. I don't know where else to go. Any questions on that? All right. I have another culvert that I need to order for Ramsey County 8 by David Lorenz in Triumph Township between sections twenty-six and thirty-five, it's a fifty-four inch arch. And the bottom is all rusted out, starting to age, but there's a little bit of a dip in the road, not bad, but. Anyway, it's time to get it replaced. And we've been replacing culverts in our county roads with poly coated. So this one's going to cost fourteen thousand, ninety-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. So I'm looking for a motion to go ahead and order that.
So. We have motion and a second to go ahead and order the fifty-four inch arch, poly coated culvert. Further discussion?
All of, so the other ones that we just did, those are all poly coated outside.
The ones we've been putting on the county roads. About ninety percent of them, anyway, once in a while, but some twenty-four or eighteen or something like that. The bigger sizes.
Further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Uh, we have a CP joint blown on one of our moors. I don't know if you ever had to buy a constant velocity U joint for anything, but they're expensive. And it's about almost two thousand dollars for parts and then we'll have to do, weld it back onto the shaft, so I'm not sure how much it's going to be exactly, it might be over that twenty-five hundred, just to hand it up for now. KLJ has got a task order. We used to call it contracts, that makes more sense. Another, that's a task order for the design work on the overlay project on Ramsey County 3 that we're doing next year. So they're doing the design this year. And it's a project from, uh, three from state seventeen down to Ramsey County eight. Where it goes to Webster. I guess I looked it over and I didn't see any issues with it at all. It's within what I had budgeted, so. Guess I'm looking for a motion for the chairman to decide now. Let's all move. Second.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and have the chairman sign the task order for with KLJ on Ramsey 3 project. Further discussion?
I was looking at the culverts already and I thought they weren't in enough shape to leave them in place. So we had to have those big patches dug out and then the tar gray on the bridge, mostly what truly there is damaged, so we can look at that and probably repair that where basically where it's at now because it's close to the right heights still for current standards. Wouldn't plan on doing any quieting like that, so it keeps it out of the next environmental threshold where you have to do a bunch of fieldwork. So that's how we're looking to get the cost down quite a bit by not leaving the road top.
Okay. Anything else in the other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Anything we want to talk about the three projects, please come on.
I'll figure out for the Ramsey County 4, Bucks Culvert Project tomorrow at ten at two. I'm just going to hold it at our office and then the big contractors are going to call in on teams actually, so. They're going to start first or second week in October, they're not going to get their first set. Okay, they're getting one barrel, one double set, it's a quad, so we get, they have two runs of double barrel boxes coming in. I think one comes in on the ninth and the other one's like thirteenth, and their completion date's eighteen, or the twenty-eighth of October. They're going to be pushing pretty water out against that completion date, but they think they can slowly get done. So that's where that is unless there's some crazy weather.
When is the road scheduled to get closed down?
Should be the first or second week in October sometime. They're going to have to do some prep work to get the box in, turn up their stream version and so. Probably end of that first week.
Okay.
I guess.
All right.
Although no more tomorrow.
Yeah. Well, wish you luck on it.
Yeah. They've been a bunch of them.
Okay. Kevin, anything else?
I have a couple more things. Travis Michaelbust says the utility permit to bore a water line underneath the military road. He's building a new house out there, the water line is on the south side of the military road. He's built on the north side, just on the west side of the crap ground up there. Used to be a really tall fence around a little piece there, that's where the house would go. So he's looking for a permission to bore a line underneath the military road. And he spilled out the utility permit already and I don't see any problem with that either. So maybe get the water there. Looking for a motion to approve that utility permit. I would so.
Second. We have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the request to do boring underneath the road for Mr. Michaelbust. Need further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries.
Then one other thing I had to bring up was that we did get our job positions all filled now that Starbutter, we've got a different Starbutter employee and he'll be starting on the first of October. I guess it's the second of the Monday, but anyway. And then we'll jump in and help him out, make sure everything gets done up there. And then we also got a position open in Devil's Lake and we got it filled. We're going through the background checks and drug testing right now, so provided they pass all that.
Okay.
That's all I have.
All right. Wonderful.
Kevin, one question. County 4, planning on any gravel for that, that option?
We've grabbed and put two loads on it already. On my way out. Not real good. I'll look at it again, it's scheduled for gravel next summer, so. Yeah, we put two loads on there.
Okay, thank you. Six o'clock, we'll open up the 2024 budget hearing. This is an opportunity for taxpayers to express their views to the county commission for the 2024 budget is approved. Budget may be examined at the offices of County Auditore during business hours and we will open up the four public comments at this time. Anybody wishing to address the county commission regarding the 2024 budget? Anybody would like to address the 2024 budget? Last one more time, anybody would like to address the county on the 2024 budget? If not, we'll go ahead and close the budget hearing. And uh, budget will be approved at the October third meeting. Regular commission meeting. Um, we still have an opportunity to adjust downward. If we find anywhere that we can. Um. But uh. Now. Big budget.
Can we ask questions?
Yep, absolutely.
The government's off. Fifty-two thousand nine hundred. What's that?
That's currently the tax program we have.
Oh, okay.
That's the early.
And then lake access. Does that become a, that become a market?
Yeah, that's their request.
So there's, I got a comment on the training center. I don't have a problem with the ten dollars a year for the. Utilities and stuff, cause right now the SWAT team isn't in there, but your own team is. So I think in order to support that, I think that's a worthwhile cause. Fifty thousand dollars for the renovations. I haven't been convinced that. There's a break even potential there. I'm going up about training and training centers that. It's a black hole for money. It's uh, somebody has to be in charge of it. Somebody has to be willing to take. The brunt of the expense when there's something that comes up. And speaking from rural fires perspective, we won't use it. We've got a meeting room. Um. We've helped with the training tower that the city's got. And I would have liked to seen other entities besides the ambulance come forward and support it. Right now as it sits. I see this just benefiting the ambulance service and our daily. The other entities that are on that board. Go back and before I was elected, I was watching the commission meeting and this thing started out as. A place to help the small departments and stuff in the community. And as it's progressed. This, this has gotten bigger and it's. You know, they're, they're talking, and this is fine. I'm not against training, but you know, they're talking about bringing in. Louisiana tech and they're bringing them in to camp craft and you know, for active shooter training and stuff. But all those trainings, when you bring in a big outfit like that, the training center isn't gonna be able to be used for it. They're gonna have to go with camp craft. They got a little bit of a problem. When we first brought it to the commission, it was thirty thousand and now it's fifty. I understand there's cost overruns and stuff, but. I would like to see more. Skin in the game for those who are supposedly benefiting from it, and I don't see it. Like to remove that fifty thousand from the budget. So I don't know if that's done now or if you got the way to whatever, but. I uh. Maybe piggyback off what you have. I went through this. Budget thing, I don't know, ten times. That is one of the things that I actually have. Maybe I'll, cause I'm following the same thing that you are. I'm totally for training also. But being on the commission prior, it was a thirty thousand dollar cast and then it went to a thirty-five, now it's a fifty. Plus the ten thousand dollars a year. I don't know where we stopped. You know, I have some other things I got marked off too. But we'll put this one direction before I bring those up. Because I, going through this. I guess I'm not tracking on what we call it a budget. Did we actually set an amount of money or we should be budgeted at? Before we started this budget? Or? Are we going into budget deficit? For the fact I'm gonna use a couple of things that we agreed to pay outside of the budget. And I'm gonna, I'm trying to throw you under the bus candy, but Candy's item of. Having to update your stuff. I don't understand why that wasn't on the budget if we knew this was gonna eventually come. I think we should have been budgeting this out the last five years. But that we have to do it. We don't have much of a choice, you know? That's an offset out of money to eat to that. But anyway, staying on the subject of this, I'm with you Lee. I think we gotta have more skin in the game for the people that are gonna have the advantages of this. I mean, giving them the ten thousand dollars. To keep operating, I don't think is. Outlawing, but another fifty two, I believe. Well, and to be honest with you, I'd be me against the ten thousand. But they are between SWAT and, and the drone team being someplace to keep. You know, right now SWAT's actually moved into search and rescue. Partially, you know, because they got stuff that's too big to get in really well, the ambulance though. Right?
Right. We're in the boo boo, I think, part of that.
Yeah, and then they got that big. Urban assault weapon or whatever they'll let it is, you know, in, in search and rescue buildings because the doors are bigger. So I don't have a problem helping out with that aspect of it because. You know, the drone team and the SWAT team are, are volunteer organizations that don't have any funding sources directly other than what you're getting help with. But the. You don't see the benefit of training in the dollar amount. It's all perspective on, when somebody. You know, as a real firefighter, my training kicks in and I don't make a mistake and a fire, you know. The public isn't gonna see that, you know, it's just those guys on the department that are gonna say, hey, this is. You know, that training paid off or didn't pay off. And that's, that's part of the problem or that creates a problem with the training because. You might train for a specific incident. And never have that incident, so you, you know, for a year down the road or two years down the road, so you don't. You know, there's no. I'm trying to say, there's no uh.
You can't quantify it?
You can't quantify it, you know. That money you spent for the training didn't help. And I think if an entity wants to train and wants to better their entity. They're gonna find a way to do it. I totally agree. It would be nice to have one place where everybody could go. But trying to stick it in. Trying to refurbish a building, I don't know that that's the best way to go about it. A lot of the training that we have a hard time doing is. Little fire, you know, drive the train. That takes a huge amount of space. We currently do it out at the West Lot of Ivy Department. Cause they're generous enough to let us do it out there. You know, so that in our particular situation, that's what we have trouble finding space for. Anyway, that's my thoughts on that.
Well, I don't know if any decisions will be made here, but certainly on the October third meeting. As far as reducing. And maybe if we're questioning an entity about their funding request, we could ask them to come in and. And either support or um why they exactly need that funding dollar amount. Would be a. A good option to allow them to have a place.
So is that something that we just marked down and it's noted or how does, how does that work?
Well, I would mark down every cut that you would like to make. If it's an outside entity out of the county, I would certainly, you know, let's bring that organization in. And either we can ask for the questions and they can defend their request or we can. Um, agree to the dollar amount that we wanna. We'd be comfortable with, or we can completely eliminate in the, the budget at that particular time. Um, and with the understanding that they can't come in with a higher request. Obviously, uh, preliminary budgets have been set and we will not raise it. From this point or the point that was decided on in, in August, so. But I think that would be a fair way to, to do it and instead of. Blanket cutting without. That entity knowing about it. And the purpose of the meeting tonight was, or the public hearing was to hear comments from the public. Gave the opportunity for that and. Nobody chose to speak out.
I do, I think it's fair to have those come and speak to the sides, even though I reflect the same opinion as what we gave.
Yeah. I, I, I think there's, there's plenty of things within the, the budget, uh, outside entity requests that we can question and um. Yeah, and certainly take a really hard look at reducing that, those numbers that we have in front of us.
Still wondering if we're, if we don't do that today, when do we go and vote on that? And then I'm not gonna bring up what I have if we're not gonna.
Is, is it for an outside, outside entity or, or is it?
Yes.
Okay.
So now moving on, I'm.
Well, I mean, you, you can, you can certainly bring it up and, and um. But I don't know if a decision should be made with all that.
Without them coming in here defending that or no? I think we should. I have a discussion on another area also.
Bring, bring it up and let's make it public and so that entity will know about it that, you know, and plenty of time to. Go here for the October third meeting.
So I'm gonna bring up the one with uh. The Lake Reading Community Shelter. Reading more into this. Yet, I mean, they wanted like sixteen thousand dollar donation and maybe I'm looking at this wrong. I'd say. And then they got in here and reading that in here. Is this the same thing for this twenty-five thousand dollars for the rent up?
No.
So.
Two, two totally separate.
The sixteen thousand is safe.
Sixteen thousand is safe.
That, that's for uh, are you?
Twenty, twenty-five thousand is the homeless shelter.
Okay. So. Even on the, on the safe, when you read in here? And then where is it at? Excuse me. So I understand the safe as far as the sixteen thousand. I was going to the Lake Reading Community Shelter where they're asking that's the twenty-five thousand? And they have a. They're looking at here. It's great, continuing with the training center stuff.
With page eighteen, that's in the miscellaneous.
So they're asking for twenty-five thousand dollars and I go on here and says the question amount will also be used to pay for monthly rent. Why do we pay for that? Are we, are we here to, when they're asking for this twenty-five thousand dollars to help support these people? Get back on their feet? And I'm kinda looking at some of these outside entities coming in here and either they're. Trying to help out the community, but then I look at it as, are we looking on the other, on the wrong end? Are we trying to help people get back onto their feet, giving money? Or we could also look at the other side of this. Do we need to have more? Places for the youth so that we don't get these people into this situation? We give twenty-five thousand dollars to, imagine this is nonprofit. We just sit down and all of a sudden, we start giving this money and then all of a sudden we got five other entities in here next year? And now we have football teams and basketball teams and hear me out on this and. That's for the youth, right? But if we have stuff like that for the youth, does that keep people off the streets and keep them busy? So that down the road that we don't have this problem we're having? Is it because we don't have enough to do for the youth? And now we're supporting. Something that, I don't know, twenty-five thousand dollars is a huge amount of money. I mean, this, this shelter should be like a donation. I don't wanna be the, the county becoming the donation for all of these entities that. Okay, hey, they give the shelter twenty-five thousand dollars, I'm gonna give some, something else twenty-five thousand. You know, I could use, so if the Hope Center comes in, they don't want twenty-five thousand, are we gonna give the Hope Center twenty-five thousand? Or, you know what I'm saying? It, it's like, where do we stop? We have a budget that we, we have to come to some kind of agreement on a budget that we need to meet. I just think that we have enough sticks in the fire that we have to meet. Of spending money other than just handing out money to things like this. That's my opinion. I mean, we have. So different than the library. I, I understand it's a entity that we're trying to give back to the people and it's gonna cost us money to update it. Which I feel must have not been done correctly upfront. How in the heck can't you control your heat and air and steam? And the building is what, three years old, twenty-five years old? You, you know what I'm saying?
It's average. Correctly. Bit of a.
Things like that. Or are we helping the community out a lot more, giving money to the library? Or are we helping the community by giving this? You know, where do we draw the line? Of who we help and who we don't help? And maybe we give ladies' days money. I'm not saying not to, but why are we paying that rent? You guys can pay my rent too, if that's the case.
Well, i- isn't that just semantics? I, I mean, they, they come in and ask for, for money and regardless of where that money is being spent. Whether it's to rent or to helping individuals directly, they still have costs to operate that facility, right? I mean.
Yeah, I mean, you could look at it that way. I mean, everybody has costs to operate a facility though.
You, you know, whether it goes all to rent or all to helping people, but you know, it's nice that they itemized what their costs are. But you, you know, it's. It, it's an itemization is what it is and where their expenses are.
Where do we cut costs? Where do we become conservative and say that we need to cut costs or do we just approve the budget and then you can go? I had a one.
No.
I mean, I got another one and I'm not trying to get some kickback on this, but thirty thousand dollars for a drone is to set aside. I think right now we, our budget is high. Is it the right time to put thirty thousand dollars away from the drone? I know that Chris put it in his budget, but should we do ten thousand? I'm not saying cut it all out. But do we need to do thirty hundred? You know, I'm trying to add up figures and try to come up with, you know, it'd be great to come up with a couple hundred thousand dollars. Save, I look at you on the call and I'm, yes, we're here for the people. That was another thing that I was looking at is. That was another thing that I was looking at is, again, we want this fancy drone to be able to do what we need to do. We are getting by with the drone we have, right? And if we're trying to do a budget, is thirty thousand maybe too much to try to stick away? You know, I don't know. Do we do ten thousand, cut it off a little bit since our budget came in super high? It's just, it's just all there for discussion. Like you said, Jeff, we could probably go through this and there's probably a lot of items that. I just don't wanna get our budget so crazy that one day I gotta, as a commissioner, we gotta come in here and say, well, everybody that works for us, do we just give a single plan? Pay for the family plan because our budget got too high and we can't manage? You know? I would hate to have to do that too. Cause I know there's some entities out there in the civilian world right now. That's what they're going. They're taking things like that way so they can keep the business open. I don't wanna have to do that neither when we're trying to budget. You know? It's just things that we, I feel that we all need to look at. Not to say cut it, cut it out a hundred percent, but maybe cut back a little bit. Where we can. Cause there's some things that we have to have. Like I was saying, we can't, there's just no decision, that's why we voted on having that. It's one of those things that came about and it's expensive. We hadn't used some of our reserves to do it, or maybe we should have been budgeting now.
Well, what, what's a reserve for? I mean, you know, to sit on that for too long and this room will be full of people that are demanding.
And that's why we use it.
Right.
Because it's there.
Yep. So we could, we could budget that in and spread that cost out over five years and budget for it, or we could take the reserve and spend it, but I guess I'm a little discouraged by two weeks prior to the finalization of the budget and with the budget hearing, uh, public hearing in place, that now we come up with the cost reductions. You know, we've had all summer to, to discuss this and work on ways to reduce some of our costs. I don't know if waiting till the last minute in order to do so is the right, if we get the right numbers in there. I'm all for cutting costs and ten thousand here and twenty thousand there, a great start. Oh, but out of a seventeen million dollar budget, it's gonna take a lot more than ten or fifty thousand dollars, so if we have any more. You know, the other, the other thing is, is, you know, we can reduce staff. And we don't wanna do that because I think the people have become accustomed to the services that they're receiving from the county and the law enforcement, the safety that they're, that I guess crime is demanding now. And the drugs that are being taken off the street is demanding. You know, and those three are our biggest costs right there. Enforcement, corrections, prosecution. And then Kevin's budget's always big, but Rhodes is always a big deal too. And, um, you know, maybe some of those costs could have been taken a look at, you know, with similar Kevin's expenses. But Kevin seems to cut his budget every time we have one of these shortfalls in our planning, you know, we. Kevin comes in with a lower, or we put off a road project until the next year. And pretty soon it's the next year. So, I am worried about our budget blame and getting things sideways. That getting close to that General Mill Max scares the hell out of me and, um.
But what have we done? I've been sitting on the commission for three years now.
Yeah.
Not a single time have we cut budget. We just go and move. We need to get a number when we start budgeting and we need to say, we, this, we're seventeen million. This is it, this is it. My checkbook at home, it says, if I only can do seventeen million, we can't go over that seventeen million. And every year that I've been on the commission, we have went over the budget. What is the budget? Where do we stop? Just spend all more stuff and raise more taxes? We gotta stop.
Did we overspend this year on our budget?
What was the budget? That's what I'm saying, you just sent us seventeen million. What did we come in last year?
But the budget that we approved last year, we haven't overspent that. We didn't overspend the one before that either. So we're not overspending what we're budgeting for.
If we would have budgeted the stuff that we have spent on the general plan, we would have, we went over the budget.
What we, what we should have done back in April is when we started this discussion with political subdivisions on their budgets, is that we want a net zero increase across the board.
We should have done that. I'm just looking at the budget and for you to say that I brought this in here the last minute? When is a perfect time? Would it made a difference about if I brought it in here three months ago? Or would we be in the same discussion? I don't, I would say we'd be in the same discussion because.
It would have been a lot easier.
I'm getting a lot of feedback from people of, we constantly are handing out money and what are we doing to pull back? What have we done to pull back a little bit? I mean, we all agree, I, I love the employees we have, so we give them a raise. Cause well deserved, right? I definitely, like I said earlier, don't wanna make cuts on getting rid of people. I don't wanna make cuts on not giving them a raise, not providing them good benefits because then we're gonna be in a real rough spot. That's why I'm saying some of the outside entities that are asking for money, maybe they need to realize that we can't be just handing out money, I know it'll only be twenty, thirty thousand. But it's twenty or thirty thousand. You know, I hate to say that it's a seventeen million dollar figure, but it's only thirty thousand. When, when my household, twenty bucks is twenty bucks.
I, I'm not, I'm not saying that. I'm saying what, three months ago, this is when that discussion should have happened, no blame. And then we.
This book is thick, John. I mean, I don't know what you think, but going through this, you can't go through this in two weeks. We go through it in approximately a week of people coming in here and giving us a budget and then going through and reading this and there's just no way. It's gotta be hashed out. So if that was the case, then every meeting that we had, after we had this brought to us by the entities of this book, and we should have went down, went through it, sat down fifteen minutes in every meeting and said, okay, we're gonna go through this much of the budget. Are we all in favor of it? Went on a little bit further, the next meeting, just set some time aside so that we wouldn't be where we're at right now. You know what I'm saying? That call, telling me that that was a last minute thing? Yeah, I take that a little personal because that's not what I meant at all to bring this in here as a last minute thing. And I'm sure Leish or Helen won't bring it in here as a last minute thing. It's our opinion, so to try to cut some budget. I mean, if that's the case, then we should have had a timeline set saying, this is when we have to sit down and have this so we're not in this discussion that we're in. To me, where do we stop? I don't know, I don't have those answers. And we're all sitting here on this commission together to try to get those answers, right? I just think a lot of this thing.
But I guess I don't, I don't think that, I didn't take it personal where, you know, I was at the last minute, cause I've been wanting to try and figure.
Yeah.
I muddled my way through, learning curve here. But I do kinda agree with Blaine that it should have been on the agenda to, you know, give us, you know, while you're going through this, because this wasn't a single rep. You know, do you have questions? You know? Or concerns about any part of it? And I guess that's why I never brought it up, I ran into this as well up today. Obviously wrongly, I assumed that this was.
I'm not gonna, I've been on the commission for three years, it's, the first year is tough. It's a super learning curve, the second curve, you finally start to wrap your mind around what's going on. Now I feel that getting some experience, got that experience and something's gotta change. It's just. And I know you vote for new, new ones. Jeff and I are probably gotta try to pull some of the weight and it's so hard. And I, kudos to you, Jeff, as much time as you put in. Cause I don't know if I could do that. It's a big budget?
Absolutely.
Where do we cut where it doesn't hurt?
I guess one thing that surprised me was when I said this when we voted on it, you know, gave permission for everybody to get stepped. Thinking it was, you know,
You know.
Performance based, everybody got stepped. And I guess that's, you know, I'm trying to get my mind around that, but, um. Statistically, like I said, not everybody that works for the county, even though there's roughly fifty people, you know, they're not all performing at a lot of the good rates. I don't have a problem with four percent cost of living because that's, you know, we're trying to take the edge up with the economy's doing. The other problem with figuring out if somebody deserves a raise is when people talk to me, I feel like I need documentation, right?
Mm-hmm.
You know, somebody pitches about Kurt McGutter on their township roads and you question them a little bit, they're not reusing, you know, they're not reusing the reclamer, but I'm supposed to go jump down Kevin's throat because their roads are shit and their, you know, and their opinion.
I've been down that road.
You know, but, you know, it's, well, when did you talk to Kevin? Why talk to Kevin? I'm just using this as an example.
I get it every game.
You know, but, you know, but I mean, I can't come to you and say this blade operator isn't doing his job because, you know, it's hearsay. Okay, you know, did you talk, you know, I don't want them talking to the blade operator, they shouldn't be talking to you. Did you talk to Kevin? Did you talk to Blaine? Did you talk to Phil? Oh, no. Okay. If they say yes, then if I say, well, when did you do that? I can't just take their word for it, I'm sorry, I mean, I think there's a problem with you doing some of this stuff and if I'm stepping out of line, I don't know that I'm stepping out of line, but, um. If, you know, they say, well, that guy doesn't deserve a raise, well, I don't know that. You know, even, um, like, you know, take Chris for example, he's a Department of One, you know? He got a raise because he wasn't at that fifty percent. You know, that was something we had to do, but I don't know how. And I apologize for not looking this up in the handbook, cause I didn't realize it till this afternoon when I was laying under some cabinet department, I didn't look this up, but, you know, how, how are evaluations done? You know, can Kevin sit down with everybody and they, you know, they sign it? Yep, okay, so in a Department of One, it's obviously the commissioner that is his supervisor, you know? Do they go through the same process that Kevin goes through with his employees? You know, is there documentation that, hey, we talked about you're a little short here, you're doing great here, I still think it's worth a step, you know? All that, that's things I think that the commission needs to talk about when we're talking raises. We don't like the blanket raise. If Kevin has somebody that's doing a good job and he wants to give that person a raise, that should be part of the budget process. It shouldn't, you know? You know, if Sheriff Fling has somebody he wants to give a raise to, that should be part, he should tell his commissioner, here's this guy's review.
So that, when you're.
So when he comes in to do his budget.
You got justification.
Maybe they're only gonna give one person a raise. To me, that's performance based. What happened here is we said, okay, you know, we're gonna do a four percent cost of living and we're giving you the opportunity for a step. Well, from when I got out of the figures, everybody got stepped. I don't like that. There's guys that deserved it, absolute people, the guys, one of my dad have, like, the third group of people, the guys. But all those people, out of fifty, there's not one person that didn't deserve a raise? I don't have a problem with four percent.
So because that's keeping up with the locality basically.
Yeah.
No, I was the same way, I'm saying.
So, but, but when we're budgeting, we have to budget for everybody. Assuming that everybody's gonna perform to their expectations. And then as commissioners, our evaluations come down to department heads. Individual employees is that department head.
Correct.
And so, and I think we've made that clear with Brian when he was in the HR and then within our policies that, you know, this isn't that, the steps are not a guarantee, they're performance based. And I guess it's our responsibility as commissioners to go to our, whoever we're holding that portfolio for and do their job evaluations, which will come out prior to the first of the year. And have those filled out and Kevin will do the same for his department and Brian will do the same for his and, and so on and so forth. And then, you know, that'll be all the. But we, you know, we can't not budget for everybody receiving it.
No, and that, I mean, that's, that's what I thought, you know, that's how I understood, you know, that process was. But I guess I, I should have asked more questions, I guess, between them and me. Was the proper way to do it, because I look like, obviously didn't know.
I was, I was, I mean, I wrote, I've asked that question. I'd actually stepped down with Jeff and asked that question, but I didn't know. To be honest with you, I didn't know of how it worked out and the thing of this is when we, let's say we did this right, oh, we moved on.
Yeah.
So if it was a blanket thing, which I've got the same impression as you got, did I take away from the departments to be able to do their job? Did the commission just say it's a blanket thing? Because the way we voted on it, it sounded like that. And if, if the employees are all watching this, they could say, well, I'm getting that, the commission said it. Doesn't matter what you think my performance is because we gave a blanket. You know what I'm saying, Jeff?
You know.
We said it, four percent on the step. And that's why I've always been asking the question, so to get a step is a timed performance, right? If I was to go from step one to step two, do I have to work for the county for two years before I go to that step two? Or is it three years? I, I don't know. Never got a direct answer of how that works. Because I've felt that the last two times, I'd be given a raise with the four percent on the step, and I know that's crazy, we want the steps, I just, you know, and that's why I was also saying is, once you max out those steps, like, I'm sure, Kevin, you've been around for a while, you've probably maxed out on the steps, so what you're seeing is the four percent, so you're probably happy that you got that four percent, otherwise you'd be staying there, right? You wanna call it that? I mean, you don't wanna cap out too fast on steps.
Right.
I mean, that's how it is at my workplace. If you cap out really fast on steps, where do you go? Do you quit your job and go somewhere else, because then you have more advancement, because we capped you out so fast? Or there's gotta be one? That's why my question was always, how many years in between steps, and then, if you got, so let's say there's three years from step one to step two. Kevin says, you're outstanding employee, I wanna move you from step one to step three a year early, because performance based. That's how I thought it worked. You know, and I agree with you too, Jeff, where, yeah, you gotta, we have the budget for the high part, but it might come, the budget might come in over, because on fifty people, you twenty five people got that step. They're all gonna have four percent, we know what the four percent's gonna be.
You know, I, I talked with Brian, and I spoke, you know, to him, just kind of, he had a dream, I think, skull that everybody got stepped. That they just heard a step. I don't know how to really gauge between, like, leave and let it improve. That's, that's been hard for me, and I guess, you know, I've... Taken, I've looked through here, and I, you know.
So what, what do you mean by everybody getting a... So you, you talked to Brian, or you talked to HR Brian?
I talked to HR Brian.
Okay.
You know, on what, you know, how he's, you know, and he told me that he thought, you know, that virtually all the supervisors had been in tough spots, that they weren't your, you know, so it, um, because my question was, you know, after you've worked with somebody for ten years, you're not really boss and employee, you tend to be more friends than having that, than you, you know, and I asked, oh, is this emotional, or, you know, is this business, you know? And, and he told me that he thought it was business. And I, I just, I went back, and I was like, everybody got a step, and that, I can't wrap my mind around it, I guess, and I... Then I bothered to frame this up and leave maybe, like, I did that, you know, I'm sure that's been most before.
No, you know, it, um, you know, we haven't approved the budget, so I guess, you know, my bad for, you know, saying that it's too late, but it would've been nicer to have these conversations in July, prior to the approving of the preliminary budget. You know, when people were coming in with their individual department head, their department budgets, and, and things like that, maybe we should've allotted more time and asked more questions at that particular time. And that's something that we can do in the future, moving forward, is making sure that all our questions are answered.
I think it would be easier on Candy also. Get more things set in stone, probably at an earlier time, so like, if we were to go through that, and we did a quarter, and she already knows, hey, this is kind of going through. You know, and then you're moving on.
It, it, it's a time crunch for starting in April with the political subdivisions, and going forward with, with budgets, and because it's, they're legislatively mandated on the timelines that we have to get through. And I know there's many late nights at Candy's, been here in early mornings, and Saturday mornings, and Sundays, and things like that, and, you know, I've seen your vehicle. So, um, it, it, it's a conundrum, and, you know, twenty years ago, when I started in this building, there was, was there four or five people in that office? And now we're down to two, two and a half. So, you know, we have, as a county, cut and reduced, and, and, uh, you know, as far as an employee to retirement, and attrition, and everything else, and, uh...
You know, when I made that motion, that day of four percent of the step, I've been involved with the step process my whole life, working, I'm not, but my years of working in the workforce, and very often I see really good people that are stopped at that top step. Okay? However, that is why there's a supervisor, because that process is to do supervision over them employees, and if they're doing better than capable work of what they have been doing, that allows them that next step.
Right.
So, I did make that for that reason. You know, I hate to see people stalled out, and because of wages today, we end up losing really good people, going somewhere else because of the salary, or whatever the case may be. But I do agree with you, Lee, you know, maybe as a commissioner, we need to take a better leadership role on making sure that our departments understand they need to be doing those strong performance reviews, and see if they do qualify. And it's hard, you know, you and I are friends.
Yeah, well, I'm not, that's, you know, that's, you know, it is hard, I mean, and I, I...
But that's also why you're in the supervisor, and I, I take that decision.
And I don't, you know, I'm not saying I don't trust, you know, our supervisors, or what I can do. It's not a hangup, there's no hangup, but, you know.
I would also agree with Blaine, you know, when you get three new people coming in, there's a lot of stuff to absorb here in a short period of time, a lot of stuff. If you spend enough time here, you're here to find out this is one of the toughest things that the commission has to do as a party. I figured that out.
Agreed. So, anything else on the budget? And, and I mean, everything's on the table as far as, as cuts. So, if we have some items we wanna cut, by all means, let's, let's cut. But if there's nothing else on the budget, or no further discussion on it, we will move on to the next item on the agenda. Good idea. We're gonna take a five-minute recess. We'll be back at, uh, seven, six fifty-five.
Jeff?
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty.
One hand, how many years we got on the zero for years?
Call the meeting back to order. Don't know where Mr. Cummings is at, like his opinion on the joint powers agreement on the 911. On his way. Bo, did you have an opportunity to take a look at that joint powers agreement with the 911 and Association of Counties?
I did. There was also a, we have a state's attorney email chain, there's pretty robust discussion about it. Some state's attorneys don't necessarily understand the value of it. As far as I'm concerned, I don't make the policy, that's you. Looking at it, I don't think it hurts to come by any means. I think it helps consolidate a lot of things, funnels it to one point and allows somebody else to have to do the dirty work. This is my two cents on it. As far as should you approve it, should you not, I'll leave that to you guys. I do think there is value, but I know you specifically, Jeff, asked me like, hey, this isn't gonna end up with the big four getting fed first and then the rest of us scrambling. I don't know that I could answer that question.
I know that was one of the concerns when I shared it with the business office down at the law enforcement center that runs Dispatch and, you know, handles, gets all those funds and, you know, that was their concern was a smaller piece app and having to fight off the larger, major four for, you know, one revenue source kind of thing. But I, you know, I guess I got a better peace of mind when talking with Aaron Burst last week.
I would agree.
So it was a little more comforting and I think he understood it a lot better than when I first got it.
His suggestion is to do this, right?
Yeah.
That's the way I understood it. The way I understood that meeting was it's based on the number of phone lines and stuff in your area. I mean, so there's no, you know.
So it's not the big guy.
You can't, you can't really cheat that portion of the setup. It's, you know, that's already been defined, so. I had a lot better feeling after that meeting also, but, you know, I didn't understand where that first 10 bucks went.
Yeah.
You know, and baby steps into it, I think maybe at some point get a little that back. So.
Yeah. Sorry about that.
You know, doing it this way because, you know, they're shifting it basically to a quasi government collection point and it's gonna be better really for the phone companies too, I think, because they're it's just one check every once in a while. That's the thing that I got out of it.
I think that is the major benefit is that it just consolidates to one point of contact. And in my experience, albeit limited with the Association of Counties, they don't really come out and support something if they think it's gonna hurt the small counties.
Yeah.
They're kind of our voice at the table, if you will. And I don't mean to put them on the spot, I don't know if the sheriff has any thoughts about the 911 fee collection or, but it might be good to hear from outside of the table too.
I guess I really haven't had a lot of time to review it, but from what I've seen with it, it's like Lee said, our whole line base has already been established and that's where we're gonna get based off of. My only question would be with, you know, like the cell phones and stuff. That's where you kind of lose out, because hardly anybody has no headlines anymore.
Well, I do think that.
Based on your.
Yeah. I thought it was broke down by accident still. I mean, looking at the.
But it's also something that the Association of Counties does now for 911 collection is gathering that information that's, that nobody seems to want to share. They're that gathering point for it and because, you know, there's probably a few of us in the room that know somebody from out of state that has a, but they've been living in North Dakota, but they've never wanted to change their cellphone. And so they have a strange area attached to their, and it's.
I think Aaron mentioned that.
Yeah, and Aaron mentioned that, that their collection debt point for that as well, so. I wouldn't have any, my reservations that I had agreeing to, since signing this would be, have been answered and I would be okay with moving forward with it if, unless you have reservations.
No, I have no opinion or reserve, but is there anybody that has any specific questions about the agreement that, hey, Bo, look at this, help me understand this?
No.
No, I think that was.
I thought Aaron did a really nice job of explaining.
Okay, well, thank you.
I'm not sure if this is a crack.
Is it 5% or?
Yeah, they get like a 5% cut.
Oh, yeah. I think.
That is the provider.
Yeah.
Because right now they gotta send a check to you or get everybody in, it's gonna stream like that, you know, I think at some point.
And then they were gonna kind of do the.
We know that dispatch centers are underfunded and so maybe we can ask the legislature to increase that fee. Where you have to collect. That's your year.
Not coming.
So do we, anybody wanna make the motion to go ahead and approve the joint powers agreement with the North Dakota Association of Counties?
I made the motion, we approve the joint powers agreement with the Association of Counties.
I would second.
Been moved and seconded that we go ahead and approve the joint powers agreement with the North Dakota Association of Counties on the 911 collection. Further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda would be the discussion on floodplain administration and FEMA letter. I think at our last, again, I remember my password. Okay. But anyway, I think at our last, maybe we discussed the possibility of sending out a resolution of support to townships or an indication to townships because one of the questions on the FEMA letter is asking about land use authorization. Thank you. And for the National Flood Insurance Program. And at that particular time, they wanted a 14-day turnaround. We had indicated that we wanted a 60-day and we were granted a 60-day extension to that and gives us some time to go ahead and ask the townships for a resolution of whether or not they want the county to go ahead with their flood or their floodplain management authority, administration to the county, or they want to do that themselves. And I do know that the state will be putting on a floodplain administration training course coming up next week, I believe it is, 26th and 27th. That'll be in Fargo. Or it'll be available through teams. And I would certainly encourage anybody in the townships that would be at all interested in this to maybe make some times or register for that anyway and maybe you can watch the teams later at your convenience. Certainly gonna make it a priority for county to attend that or be represented at it. But we have any, I know you and Megan were working on a resolution similar to what the townships did back in the 90s for planning and zoning.
Yes, it's currently still being drafted. It would be my position that zoning and building and floodplain management fall under the same umbrella because that's really what floodplain management is about, where can you build, where can you not build? In addition to that, the National Flood Insurance Program, NFIP, is very closely related to that as well. We've been working very closely with Chris Jagger and several townships to see if we can get some sort of indication or resolution within that 60-day timeframe. We're not waiting until day 58 to get started or anything like that. I do believe that floodplain management would fall under some of the previous resolutions that some of these township courts made in the 90s. I think Jeff wanted to put a little bit more of a pin on it and say specifically you are taking floodplain management and that's what we're working on drafting. There are a few different sections of law that could be applicable. There's a whole chapter on townships, a whole chapter on floodplain management. There's a whole chapter on delegating authorities. And so we're just trying to find the right sections to put in there. But it's definitely not forgotten about, so. As far as I am aware, I think Chris has been in contact with some of the, I'll call them the wet townships, if you will. Some on the south and western part of the county. Those are the ones that are of major concern to FEMA, I believe. I don't really think they are as concerned about townships in the northeast central part of the county. It's fairly dry over there in terms of NFIP stuff. And I won't speak for Chris, but I know that he's been having a heck of a time because it's harvest and a lot of our township supervisors are involved with agriculture and, you know, whether it's farming, whether it's working at an elevator, things like that, but he's he's been really trying to run them down, I know, so it's kind of the update for now.
Well, and I think the good part about the resolution is having the townships actually sign off on it and not having it verbal, because I think one of the initial letters that we received from FEMA was, do you have written or verbal authorization for this? Well, yes, it was told to us 20 years ago or 22 years ago or whenever. You know, and there's a lot of things happening at that particular time in the county and the townships through floodplain management and different things like that, so whether or not things got done right or overlooked, we don't know. But I guess the best thing we can do now is move forward with what we know and what they're asking us to do. And I know they are working on revising their maps, their firm maps.
Long overdue.
Long overdue. They weren't particularly accurate when they first came out, but they were using the best technology that they had at that time. And so revising that and, you know, coming up with a different base flood elevation so we can have a better understanding of that ourselves will be good. And hopefully the, the townships are all getting the same letter, so the same type of. And it's not just Ramsey County, it's not just the townships in Ramsey County, it's everybody. And so. Yep.
And I'm not trying to spook anybody at the table or anybody who's listening, but I think FEMA is, specifically with the National Flood Insurance Program, you have to have a community ID on your policy and they want to make sure they're getting the right community, whether it's policies were written under Ramsey County that should have been written under a township. And I don't think that's gonna invalidate anybody's policy. I think they are just wanting to make sure that their policies are accurate and that's kind of what's spurring this whole movement of, you know, would you agree with that, Jeff?
Yeah, yeah. I think FEMA has incurred some really significant costs nationwide with some natural disasters and they want to make sure that, you know, what they're covering is is, was done right in the first place, I guess. And so we want to make sure that our citizens are, can get flood insurance if they so desire to get it. And if that's Ramsey County or if it's, you know, Cooley Township. You know, and I think identifying under century code, is a township considered a community?
I believe it would qualify, it does qualify as a community, so.
You know, having that unique community identification for the insurance companies to write that policy is, is what they're looking for, so. I don't know if I have anything else for that, but, and well, I know you.
Did that spur any questions from anybody sitting here at the table?
The resolution, I know there, like Bo said, it's three or four different codes that they're trying to come up with, making sure that they ask the right questions on the resolution of support.
We, we just want to get it right. We don't want to have to come back to the drawing board in two years, one year.
That's right.
And I don't know how closely you all looked through the old resolutions, but they range from 85 to 97, so it takes a while to get the townships on board.
Well, that was probably as they planned, you know, I mean, that's just how it worked.
Right, exactly.
You didn't care who had the deal.
And a lot of these townships, they meet once a year, if that, so. Catching them when they're in is can be a challenge. I don't want to go back that far.
Yeah. And, you know, some of those.
They thought that was water under the bridge.
Supervisors that since passed away or those records that been, you know, I'm not sure if On March had them in the garage or in the attic, so, you know, but we'll keep that on the agenda and until it gets resolved and gets submitted and for FEMA satisfaction and Department of Water Resources, so. Thank you for your work on that.
Yeah, I don't know, but I'm the one that deserves the thanks, I think you should thank Chris Jagger if you see him.
Chris and Megan, Megan's really good for your office, thank you for that. So. Okay, any other unfinished business? Any more discussion on the floodplain administration or FEMA letter? Okay. Cancel checks. I think there's one.
Yep, one $25 check.
Yeah.
Second.
Moved and seconded that we approved canceling the check that was requested by the treasurer amount $25. Further discussion? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Raffle permit. Have a raffle permit for the VFW auxiliary.
A motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the raffle permit. Further discussion? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Reappointment to visitors committee.
That is Kyle Blanchfield's position that we appointed him to. Two-year term. Susie Kenner asked that he be reappointed because she does not want to lose him.
Okay. And did Kyle have a choice in that matter?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I hope you hear the whistle sound lightly.
Yeah.
So, a motion to accept the reappointment to the visitor commissioner committee for Kyle Blanchfield.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Discussion on the Highway 2 corridor letter. Anybody got a copy of that?
I can go over this a little bit if you have to, I contacted, here it is. So I contacted Kevin Britt today and he contacted the gentleman that sent the letter out.
Ron Hanke?
Yes, and then he asked, because when you read this letter, it says that if we don't do something, take some of the corridor though, we're not gonna move on, that's what we understood it. So Kevin contacted him and he stated that Kevin wanted to know, well, how many do we have to take up? You know, if he drove out there, looked at it, he's like, well, three, there's three for sure that could just be gone. So now he contacted him again and this gentleman said that frontage road looks like some of the areas need frontage road and that's what Kevin had tried to contact him back today to see if there's gonna be money, did they fund that, how does that get funded? So that's where he's at on that. And the individual was pretty good to talk to, so Kevin Britt is working that. And obviously, once we would come together and decide, okay, what can we remove and what can't we remove, I imagine we probably would have to have a public meeting and, or, I mean, that's up to you guys. Or all of us in here.
The question I had when I read that was, so I don't, I mean, did they, let Kevin copy? Since Kevin's doing it, did they tell him what the rules were?
And that's what he's working, he, so he went out earlier with Wyatt and I talked to Wyatt also. And they were supposed to be counters, but, well, I think this is the, what came back, because there hasn't been any counters. I haven't seen any counters. Kevin hasn't seen any counters and I think this is the process of needing to decide amongst the middle-class township here, so middle-class township and us, come to some kind of conclusion, okay, what can we lose? And when Kevin talked to Wyatt and they went and drove around, the reason for some of the turn lanes that cannot be in is, like say if you have a corridor with, where the two turning lanes would end up, can't do that, the federal will, they just won't. The federal, they just won't do that at all. So one of the corridors would have to be taken out so that they could put that turning lane. And that's why some of the places don't have turning lanes because they didn't remove that access point. And what he was thinking is if there is frontage road, which we all had talked about just before, then you'd be able to remove some of that where you'd have, okay, two access points or three access points. You had five and now you have two, you know, and the frontage road would obviously help take some of the pressure off.
I guess that was my point is, I mean, if there's some, they're going to pick themselves. It's just like, you know, is it A or B that you're going to get rid of?
And that's what Kevin was working with him, okay, he wanted to know, do they have some in mind that we can't make the decision on? They already made that decision, why do you get into that discussion? He wanted to know that and what type of funding was going to be used if there was some frontage roads put in. So that's where it's sitting now and he had a contact of today, he talked to him once and then one after driving around and looking at it. So he's like, okay, we could probably do this, could do that. And granted, I'm sure the public is going to have their opinion also. We want to try to, like Kevin and I talked, we want to try to make the best for the public and the safety is the biggest key. And that's where, I know it's probably not going to make everybody happy what happens, but the biggest key here is we have, it's the safety of the public. And it's not because I want approach so I can get right into my house versus driving down 200 feet turning on a frontage road to get to my house, you know. They're trying to get rid of some of these pinch homes is the way I understood it. And that's the way Kevin was talking to the gentleman, that's the way he put it to him too, so. At least someone's listening.
Well, and I think the important part is by eliminating the access and median crossing, turn lanes throughout the corridor may then be extended as needed. So I think there's going to have to be some sacrifices made and identifying which turns can be maybe eliminated and put in with a, you know, access through a frontage road type of situation.
And I think some of the people need to realize that if they would put the J-turns in, they were just taking out certain terms and we didn't have any decision on that at all.
Yeah.
So we already, they already agreed not to do the J-turns, so you need to realize we have to do some kind of agreement so we're not going to get no turn lanes either, you know. So then what did we do for the public's safety? Nothing, you know, we just kept the problem the same and they do a overlay and here we are, people still getting injured, possible death, you know.
Yeah. So maybe, you know, a committee of a couple commissioners with a couple township supervisors and I don't know if Kevin, if you'd want to be a part of that. And, you know, obviously we'd have to probably announce that as a, as a meeting and, you know, allow the public to maybe come in and have some comments too. But maybe as, you know, a smaller group making those decisions on which lanes or which approaches can be eliminated, which ones you'd like to see longer turn lanes on would be something that would be better with like four or five of you instead of, you know, all five of us and all three of their township supervisors, you know, getting together. So you and Bill are the highway portfolios?
Yes. I'm game for it and I can let Kevin know that.
And Kevin and Al would probably be really good on the.
Yeah, because they've been working the whole thing, so they.
Other things and, and.
And obviously the public must be listening to this too because they keep going back to usually.
Right.
If you're not doing the right thing, they're probably going to keep going back to you.
And then I think Mr. Hankey wanted a answer, a response from the township in the county by November 1st. So.
So I could contact Kevin tomorrow and see if something's set up sooner than later.
Yeah.
If you're okay with that, Jeff.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll let you take the ball and run with it.
I could do that and then I'll let you guys know and get their emails. I got your guys' emails and then push it from there and maybe follow along.
Yeah, Eric, Kevin had said that when he went on with Wyatt, didn't Wyatt explain some of those things and it was better understood and.
Absolutely, and I don't, I don't think, I don't think, I was on the same page as Wyatt, so well, this is why we can't do.
Yeah.
The feds just won't do it, you can't put a turn lane into a turn lane, no. And after he, when you actually sat down and drove with him, I thought that it totally makes sense. It makes it more dangerous than it is now.
Yeah.
Because now you don't know which turn they're turning on.
And maybe that's something that wasn't necessarily explained when they did the public meetings.
I think everybody was so tied up on the turn, on the J-turns.
Yeah.
Those questions weren't asked.
Yeah, so. But at least there is a discussion and a dialogue happening, so we certainly want to thank our representatives and Mr. Hankey and township supervisors for being involved and making their voices heard. And hopefully we can make that a better, safer stretch of highway. Anything else on that line?
Nope.
Good, thanks, Jeff.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody else have anything on the Highway 2 corridor discussion?
It's good that I'm pleased, it looks pretty positive.
Yeah, moving in the right direction. Been a long time coming. Okay. Proclamation for 4H week. We have a 4H week coming up and we have an official proclamation that we'd like to have permission to have the chairman sign that declaring, recognizing October 1st through the 7th, 2023 as the official proclamation for 4H week.
I'll move to approve that we signed the proclamation.
Second. Okay. Motion in a second to go ahead and have the chairman sign the recognition of the 4H week, October 1st through the 7th. Further discussion? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And if anybody wants to take a look at the proclamation, we have it in our packets and we'll make that available online, but, or I could go ahead and read it, but I think everybody can do that on their own. Oh. The visitors and delegations. Sheriff Lang, since you've sat here patiently through the entire meeting, do you have anything for us?
Just to update you, October 5th, we got leadership training coming in, set up. We had a good response, we got seven from the jail that go with 10, had seven deputies. I think we got two dispatchers, one from the LAC, three from DLPD and then the surrounding area that the LAC takes care of. We got a representative for two, just supporting by every agency, so the class is full, so we'll have that. Other than that, I just want to get on the agenda for the next meeting. We need to take a look at some of the fees that we are charging for civil service. I've been in training all this week and I still got three days of civil service training, but we're a little bit behind on the fees that we could be charging that would offset taxpayers with their pay and for us running around serving these papers, we could recoup a little bit of it.
Okay. Anything else?
Other than that, then everything seems to be going good. We've got one new car back in service, the other one should be hopefully done Wednesday. It's a full staff, knock on wood.
I know I've told you before, but I'll tell you again, I like the new color scheme on the vehicles, it looks good, so, very nice. Representative Frelick, thank you for coming tonight, anything for us?
No, I'm just here to learn. Thank you for making it open to the public online too, I appreciate that if you listen while I'm on the road.
Yeah, glad you're here, thank you. Kevin, anything else? Commissioners?
No.
Law enforcement center meets tomorrow morning at 8 o'clock at the law enforcement center. That is as well open to the public and anybody's needs a team links for that, you know, you can send that out.
October 3rd, Pancake feed for the 4H. It's got a meeting before that, so that's Sunday.
Sunday, October 1st. 8:01 I think.
My people might be, I don't know.
8:30 to 1. 8:30 to 1 KC all, October 1st, Pancake feed for the 4H. Anything else, both?
Nothing right now.